Okay, roll call the meeting to order.
And as we rise for the pledge, I'd also ask that we take a moment to remember Gray Snowwalk, who was a dedicated planning commission member for a number of years, and Lowell Bond, who was a true pillar of our community. Stand, please. Thank you. We have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Good.
Here.
Mr. Seaward.
Here.
Mr. Stomba. Brian Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Huffman.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the selection of a chair and vice chair for 2025.
I'd like to move that Mr. Good and Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Good would be the chairman, Mr. Schaefer be the vice chairman for your point forward.
Second. Third.
That was a fast, that was a fast one.
Seems like that was rather quick. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, shall we have roll call, please?
Mr. Good.
Yes.
Mr. Seaward.
Yes.
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Dickson.
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you, and we will look forward to productive 2025.
Thank you for serving a good man.
Yes, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, do we have any items to add or delete from the agenda that's been sent out to us?
Just two items for announcement, if you can, Mr. Chairman, I can do that, man.
Okay.
I'm not an addition.
Okay. Okay, then we will follow the agenda that has been distributed to us and that we have here this evening. Okay, we have the minutes from our December the 11th, 2024 meeting. Any additions or corrections to this set of minutes? Okay, motion to approve?
Making motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for the citizen comment period, and we also don't have any public hearings scheduled for this evening. So our agenda items are ones for updates and discussion. The first one being a draft ordinance review for the village residential zoning district. And this would be, in addition to the zoning ordinance in chapter 413, it would be village residential zoning R six or V R D. And in looking at this, at the statement of intent, I'm just going to read the first paragraph because I think this is important, especially if folks are wondering what village residential zoning would be. And again, the first paragraph says, "The district is established to promote and maintain a harmonious residential environment within the town, while emphasizing affordability, quality housing, and small-scale neighborhood design. This district seeks to offer a range of housing options that cater to varying needs and lifestyles, including older populations, single individuals, small families, all while embracing smaller household-size trends." Again, I think that's important to state what the intent of this district would be and give everybody an idea of why we're looking at this. Okay, Brian, anything else to add to the ordinance review?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in your packet of books, there are a few things that are highlighted in red, so this ordinance draft includes the sum total of the surveys that you guys did for answering those individual questions. So what we did was we took the most popular answers for each one of those items that Brooke had distributed in the Requested Back, and then that was what we built into this draft. So, you know, a couple of things have already come up, and I tried to highlight those in red. The first one is on the second page, the total minimum square footage for the entire parcel, 32,500 square feet. So that is just under, just under about three quarters of an acre. And that was the most popular response for that. The minimum square footage of the village, open space, and facilities. Here we've got a little bit of a conflict, conflict between 413.2B and then 413.9B, which says common open space shall be provided at a minimum rate of 10% of the parcel. So the 10% is going to be, the percentage is going to be easier for a developer to utilize rather than specifying a specific square footage. So my recommendation is going to be to strike 413.2B totally out of here and just keep the open space. Now, one comment that Mr. Schaefer brought up today was, you know, in the drawing that you have, which Brooke did, she's a really good artist by now, she's really good at drawing up to scale.
Yeah.
So she took about three quarters of an acre square and used the dimensions that are currently in the draft ordinance to give you guys an idea of what this thing could look like. So essentially, there are two houses here that are 20 by 30, and then the rest are 20 by 20. So what we're looking at is in three quarters of an acre, with the current 10% open space, you're looking at about eight to 10 dwelling units maximum. By the time you allow room for the buffer and the driveway and the parking spaces and the dwellings and the setbacks between the dwellings and the setbacks between the office and the refuse container and then your overflow parking down there, by the time you build all that in, it generates about eight to 10 of these smaller units per three quarters of an acre, depending on how you maximize that. So ideally, what we would do is we would just pick a, you know, we'll get it down to X number of thousands per feet, you know, per dwelling unit, and then that way, if a developer has a bigger parcel, then they know they can put more units in that. If they have a smaller parcel, then it would be limited to maybe eight, you know, or 10 if they know how they lay it out. So one question that Mr. Schaefer brought up was, do we actually need 10% of open space? I mean, as you can see in the middle there, inside the roadway, it's roughly 50 by 70. His comment was, you know, maybe the developer would want to add another dwelling unit there and have less open space, and should we consider allowing them to do that? So one thing that you could consider is instead of having 10% open space as part of the minimum, you could reduce that to, say, 5% minimum, cut this area roughly in half. And really, what the open space is designed to do, it is in the statement of intent, it's designed to give that neighborhood or group of houses their own personal green area that they can play volleyball in or have a picnic in or put a picnic shelter there or playground equipment or whatever, but it's their space, it's not utilized by the general public, it's just for them in their little development areas. So there are some people that say more green space is better, some people say more housing units are better, so maybe there's a compromise there. That's something for you guys to think about, you know, as we move forward with this draft ordinance. And John might have been just stood your thunder, but I just want to make sure that we brought that up.
Yeah, thank you.
In relation to the sample sketch. So in the setback regulations, you have the various, the numbers that were highlighted and read, those were the most popular answers. Under height restrictions, the maximum height of 28 feet, which is two stories, and the current, the story is 14 feet. In most of our residential neighborhoods, it's a 35-foot maximum, but because these are smaller homes, you know, you don't want a missile silo, you'd rather have it smaller and lower a little bit to make it blend in with the, with the building residential concept a little bit more. We did use the 400s per foot minimum dwelling unit size with a minimum width of 16 feet to make sure that we don't get, you know, crazy things like people want to use cargo containers and stuff like that to, you know, build some of this stuff out of. And maybe Virginia Building Code allows those at one point in time, but right now, they're not. Currently, our ordinance requires double this number, 800 square feet minimum for a residential unit. And so one of the things we were going to look about the comp plan was maybe reducing, keeping this one at 400, but maybe we reduce the minimum dwelling size in all of our other residential neighborhoods from 800 square foot minimum to, say, 600 square foot minimum to give people an opportunity to build some smaller dwellings. And this is, again, a minimum. Under parking, under item B, 413.7B, minimum of a half a space per dwelling unit within the overflow parking area. So this is meant for guests, visitors, and overnight stay, say, somebody's family comes or something like that. This is to be able to provide, and if you see it in your drawing there, down the lower left-hand corner, there is a couple of spaces there, and it's just based on the number of dwelling units that, total dwelling units you could have. So it gives people an opportunity to build some additional spaces for visitors and overnight guests and things like that. 413.7, under G, all parking spaces and parking lots, if we're going to require overflow parking, we need to designate that the lots are also the maintenance responsibility of the owner. 413.9 includes common open space at 10% of the parcel. You guys think about that number, you know, 10 is too much, and 5 is too little, maybe we do 7% or 8% or whatever it is, just long as we're consistent with all submittals that come in, that's the key. I used some submission requirements which were fairly specific and that come almost literally from the P and D in terms of turning in a master land use plan and a rezoning application. The land use plan needs to contain elements that are captured already in check of 515, which is our site plan, section of the ordinance. As always, I really recommend that people turn in an exhibit sketch first at no cost, just to get an idea of what they're proposing, is something we think that we could accept, you know, as a, as a permission and recommend to the council, or is it so far out in the left-field parking lot that there's no way that you absolutely would be able to recommend this thing? So it allows the people a little bit of a bite at the apple without having to pay for it. Plus, it reduces the amount of surprises and shock that you guys get because it's not a formal submittal, it's just an exhibit sketch for review. I did add some language about landscaping. I added something about lighting. Lighting tends to be one of the more controversial issues in any neighborhood, much less a smaller, more densely built neighborhood where lighting would be, limiting that lighting and having it downward facing would be really important so that we don't have glare in somebody else's house. Roads, parkings, entrances, trails, and pathways, and utilities. Now also, so when the town attorney gets a hold of this thing, he's going to probably pick this part.
Yeah.
You know, he's going to add some language in it, he's going to suggest some things from other parts of the ordinance, he's going to want to take some things away. So all the topic of today is, was to give you guys a look at this, see if you have any glaring issues with it, and then if you're okay with this, I'll give this to the town attorney and let him start putting together, like, a legal framework that could be adopted, you know, recommended by the commissioner and adopted by the council and incorporated into our ordinance. If there is something you think of later that should be in this thing that we overlooked, by all means, email me or text me or something. You got something, Bill?
No, I was just thinking about it, but I was like, the open space doesn't have to be all in one spot, does it?
Well, it does.
It does, okay.
It applies, because if you, we had somebody who did a submission on the planned neighborhood development about eight years ago, 10 years ago, and they took their 25% open space and they wanted to use every little sliver of five-by-seven-foot stuff all over the whole development.
Yeah, yeah, to be their open space, okay, gotcha.
To constitute their green, their green open space. And they said, well, we meet the percentage, and they did, but it wasn't an area that could be utilized by the neighborhood.
Gotcha.
It was just little bits and pieces all over the whole site plan. And so, uh, I advised them that, I don't think that was the intent of the commission and the council.
Not quite gonna cut it, no.
The open space concept. And they said, yeah, we were just seeing it that way.
We were five, yeah.
But, uh, we could do a smaller amount of contiguous open space like John suggested, like say Fiverson and let the, let the builder build one or two more units in there. And then let the rest of the open space be within the setbacks that we've already established.
Gotcha.
That would be something we could do.
Well, actually, I, I question if we even need to require the open space.
We do, we do.
I mean, it would be up to the developer.
No, we got to do that. You've got to have an open space in some kind of these developments or you're on top of each other and you're just insane. I, I just feel like.
I personally like the ten percent.
I do too.
I like a larger, because I think it's more where they feel like they're all in one community. They can go out, they have their own little park and it could be a, a more of an attraction.
It's almost like a little park.
Because this is my, this is our community. I, I like a little park.
I like it too.
Well, and, and, you know, as a compromise of that, what we could maybe do is, uh, divide the ten percent into two areas that cumulatively meet that percentage. So that necessarily wouldn't have to take this huge chump right out of the middle or right out of one corner of their development. They may be able to do two slightly smaller areas and have picnic shelter in one and the other would be like for a volleyball net or something like that. Or do you think it all should be one?
I think it should be all one. I feel like it should be all one because that'll give you the best, best living.
If you have it, I think one would be best. But I mean, the goal here is to create more housing and the more amenities, I mean, do, are they going to have a laundry? Are they going to have an open space? The more amenities, the more the cost of the housing.
The laundry is on there.
Yeah, so I, I think, I, I see where you're coming from, you know, and really what we're after here is to get.
We already got seven houses here.
You know, and so.
And a half an acre, less than.
And, and this is, you know, an eight to ten units in three quarters acre, this is probably.
That's plenty.
I mean, this is, this is a lot denser than even most of the P and D's that we've turned in, uh, that you guys have looked at, either hypothetically or in actual build out in the real land. So, uh, total number of residents is not as big, you know, because when you can build, you know, a hundred and fifty townhomes, you're gonna jam a bunch of people into there. But in terms of, of overall density, it rivals a planned neighborhood development right now with the way it is. But it does allow much smaller house sizes and it does, you know, all we're doing in the draft ordinance is giving them some basic ground rules. They can be as creative as they want to with how they apply that. This thing that comes in from them could look like anything really, uh, as long as it meets the major criteria that you guys established, uh, for design and development. And if they wanted to, uh, you know, one of the things that I was going to add in here is that, say they want to petition John to, um, provide an element that's not a minimal, uh, a minimum requirement in the ordinance, but it, it, when they bring it up to you guys, we'd like to be able to utilize some of our s, our open space to do X. Is that a, a variance that you guys would be able to recommend? So have a little bit of a, of a variance process accessible to the developer to where they could make a recommendation, you know, for something. And it may be really attractive. I don't know what they would come up with, but it may be something you guys could a hundred percent get behind. And I'd like to have a process in there where you are able to do that and then recommend that to the council. And your hands are not totally tied, you know, by the black and white, what's in this draft ordinance. But that was something I was gonna include and I'm talking to the town attorney about that next week.
And all, all the parking shown on this draft is additional parking, right? It's not parking for the units.
Yeah, so the, if you see the little peas that are up in front of each dwelling.
Yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha.
It's almost like little pull-offs around the one-way thing. That's where each individual resident would park.
Yep.
And then the overflow is basically down here in the left corner. And then of course, your parking in front of your office and your laundry, uh, and stuff is, is as predicated by the ordinance as there. So, um, having at least, you know, a handicap accessible space there. And probably they're going to build at least one of these units to be ADA accessible. So having an ADA accessible site parking space there with a ramp or something like that would be critical. But that would be part of the design and we would look at it that way.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like the parking at the units. I see it on the sample and then it's also in the suggested wordage that the parking space per dwelling unit at the unit. I think that's good.
Well, and that was, that, that was the one that was preferred by the group moving forward was that, and, and that actually came to us from the town council too, was that everybody thought that having parking at the individual houses would be more favorable to residents. It would be better security and you wouldn't have this huge parking lot that you would have to build. So in this case, you would tuck a small overflow parking area down in one corner. And then, uh, you know, one big thing and one of the things that I had mentioned to Brooke was, you know, if you look at this thing, when you look from the street into the development, you look through the tree buffer.
You see grass.
And the only you see is this open space and a little road with some little cottages around there. Well, that looks attractive. You know, you don't see a big parking lot or an office or a dumpster inside of a fence. You don't see all that stuff. That stuff's tucked into the corners, uh, so from the outside of this thing, from the street view, it's gonna look very attractive. And so their sign would be right there at the entrance, you know, that would call this thing, uh, and they would look at it. So, you know, I think it's worth a shot. Uh, it's, it's gonna take somebody to go out on him and build one of these. So he's gotta decide to do it and then everybody else is watching to see how it turns out and then maybe we see a bunch of it.
And I think before it's fin, it, it would be nice if we could visualize it before we finalize any numbers, which know, we're just talking about it to start now.
Sure.
Like with open space, for example, like maybe take, if there's a, a parcel, put four cones somewhere and say, this is the open space. And like, how does that equate? Because if we put a minimum of ten percent, I mean, the developer is gonna make it as lean as possible on that because then they can maximize the units of course. So we said five percent, they're gonna have five point one percent. If we say ten, it's probably gonna be ten point one, you know, as opposed to five percent minimum, oh, let's do ten. You know, because they can put another couple of units there, so.
And this is a little bigger. I mean, this is thirty-five hundred square feet, uh, actually ten percent of the minimum lot size would be thirty-two fifty. Yeah, three thousand two hundred fifty square feet would be the minimum, uh, open space, contiguous open space. And then, like I said before, you know, you're gonna get some open space in the setbacks between structures and between structures to roadways and structures to parking spaces and structures to each other, uh, and the facilities and the trash and all this stuff. You'll, you'll get some green grass areas.
It's kinda like, like around Rossar Drive, don't you think? In, in the, that like pocket park there and you have that whole like.
Yeah, we talked in Long Park.
Yeah, okay, yeah, 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 good idea.
In Long Park, see the big round road? Houses all the way around the outside. They won't be nearly that big, but I trust it.
Take it off it, not the houses.
But it'll be that similar kind of layout. So I think that, um, if you're okay with me doing it, I'll get this in front of Jason and have him start building in the legal stuff that has to be built into this thing. And then hopefully by the next time you guys see this, we'll have something from him, at least a draft that we would be able to work. At the worst case scenario, we would have it for the March meeting. We may not have time to get it by the quick working. But, um, so we're close.
It's very, very interesting. It's such a great idea.
We're getting to the point where we can almost see how this thing was look and sound and feel. And then that's gonna be important when you guys make a recommendation to the council office.
Thank you, Brooke, for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could, could, could the open space be on the outside of this?
Well, it's gotta be inside the buffer.
Oh, it has to be inside?
Inside.
Okay, well, it could be.
Yeah.
You could put all the houses on the inside and then the, okay, gotcha, yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you could have your, your. Yeah, put your contiguous area in the back with your barbecue grill and your shelter and your, with your picnic tables and, uh, you know, your, uh, whatever. You know, worship bids or, you know, hornball boards or whatever on concrete slab. And then that's your recreational areas for that development. So you can do it a million ways.
Gotcha.
It's just, we have to give them the ability to build the box and then how they build the inside of that box is really up to them.
That's so interesting.
We do have something, not, not like this, but over on Cottage Drive.
Yes.
Uh, those houses are probably a little bit bigger, obviously, uh, but they've been there for a long, long time.
Yeah.
And they have parking on that street that runs in front of them. Uh, so we do have something kind of similar.
Well, you mentioned earlier, you know, the old motor courts that you used to be able to stay in at night. You'd go right up to your small little cottage and you unpacked everything, you stayed in there. And of course, the office had the, the bathrooms and the shower, you know, component. And sometimes it had a small, uh, kitchen dining area, you know, for you. And the homeowner or the manager lived in that big central building and all these little things are all around the outside edge.
And you had a place in the middle with a picnic table and so on, yeah.
So we'll be recreating something like that for people to live, for other people just to stay. So, uh, and, uh, this will not be eligible for lodging houses.
That's a good thing.
That's in there.
Gotta be long-term. Okay, so, um, that's all I had for that one, Mr. Chairman. Um, if you have any questions or anything, or again, you guys think of something, you're like, hey, what about this? This would be nice to require or have, or I don't think this is a good idea. Tell me that so I can tell Miss Bocken that so that he can. And this is not gonna be perfect. When we get it done, we're gonna have to tweak this thing.
Did, did our answers kind of coalesce around something that was feasible?
Totally.
Okay.
It, it, uh, it pointed us in a definitive direction for every single one of these elements. Like it was clear, um, the only one that was close was the one that said, we want, uh, trees everywhere versus just trees, uh, in and among the open space or in and among the houses. That was the only one that was close. Uh, and it, it worked out that three of you said, put trees everywhere, you know, wherever they want them. And then, uh, for think they're gonna need them. And then the other said, well, just in between the houses, you know, would be fine. But, uh, I could see where the open space, if it had, you know, a couple of trees planted in association with a, uh, you know, a recreational structure or something would do better. All the rest of them were five to one or six to one. There were two that were seven oh. I mean, it was, so that was really like clear. You guys were like hitting everything right on top. So y'all were, as a group, you were very, uh, consistent, I think, in your message, which, that makes me feel good because then that gives me, us clear direction on which way to go with this. But yeah, it was, it was very helpful. In fact, we may end up using a tool similar to that on future things.
Yeah.
Because it allows each of you to deal with the questions on your schedule at your time, not in a meeting, but in the quiet time when you have, it's time, some time to think about it. And then provide us answers that then we can, you know, accumulate, cumulatively create a response to the group. And that, that really worked well over time.
What if there's any questions that are causing any question? If there's any questions that aren't really understood, then it can be brought, like if it's, oh, well, everything was six one except these two were.
Yeah.
Three, three, four, three. It's like, why was it four, three? I mean, maybe it's because of what you think, but maybe somebody read the question a little bit differently than another person, so.
And if you're in a group setting, it's easy to get carried away with the conversation when you're thinking about the answers to the survey alone by yourself.
Yeah.
We actually get a much truer picture of what you, Brian Sowers, not you as one oh seven, uh, recommends. So, uh, and then when we assimilate all of those, we get seven independent opinions. And when they all overlap or very close to overlap, we know that's the answer. That's the answer we need to embed in the, in the whatever it is. So we'll probably use that tool again because it was very helpful.
The only, the only, um, issue that could come from that is that people, you know, can change their mind. People can make a, a, wanna argue their, their, their case of it and could change somebody's mind. You don't have that when you're just dealing with black and white, you know, you don't have that.
Sure, sure. So like now or between now and, and the next couple of times we look at this thing, if you guys do have a change of heart on something, that's, we. Until we recommend it to the council and even after we, you know, in talking with some of our former planning commission creators or, or the, the ones who wrote the zoning ordinance, they refine, our ordinance, the way we see it right now, they refined that thing numerous times after it was initially published to tweak it till they got it, till they felt that they got it to a place that was right. So this won't be perfect coming out of the gate. It, it will have to amend it, you know. There will be questions from designers and developers and stuff, be like, oh yeah, we forgot about that. We need to add that in there. So, uh, but yeah, it, it gives us, I want to give you guys multiple chances to, as a group and then both individually to work on this.
Okay, any other discussion on the village? Okay, the next item to review and discuss is the comprehensive plan, our second public information meeting. We have a number of topics there that we should look at.
One significant change, uh, the February twenty-fifth meeting for the council work session is gonna be a special meeting. It's gonna be a little bit busy, so they had asked us to move the joint work session with them on the, on the complaint update to the March twenty-fifth council work session.
Oh, March, okay.
So it'd be one month later.
Okay.
So at the bottom of the page there, they'd asked us, it's the same day, it's, it's, uh, twenty fifth.
I have a standing commitment on Tuesday.
I, I can't do that day either, the March.
So, um, I guess what we'll do is we'll try to get a date that we get something out, you know, and maybe we end up doing it. Their work sessions are always for Tuesday. And it's either a work session or a special meeting. If it's important enough to them, I'll see if they want to do a new, just pick a new date, like a Wednesday or a Thursday. Uh, I usually try to stay away from Mondays and Fridays.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll see if, you know, if it's important for them to do that, uh, we'll try to get another date then for you. Uh, but they would like to have, majority of the council would like to have a, an informal discussion type work session about the comprehensive plan.
Great.
Uh, together with you. So that means we have to advertise that. You guys will both, you and the mayor will have to gather your meetings open, uh, because you'll be meeting jointly, uh, together. And, uh, so we'll have an agenda.
We had a joint one a few years back. I don't remember what that was for, but I remember having a joint one.
Before my time.
I tell you, I did one that we did have a joint one was for, um, the Paulins Town Home Project over on.
That may have been.
That may have been it, right.
We had a joint meeting with planning commission, town council on that because that was a rezoning and a, um, uh, special use permit all at once.
I couldn't remember why, I just remember we had at least one anyway. But that's been a long time ago.
So we'll, we'll get a, uh, we'll get a couple of dates out there, see what the town council wants to do. I was trying to piggyback it on one of their existing court sessions because I know they always block those out. But if you guys are gonna have significant numbers of you who have conflict with that, then I think we need to try to change it. Okay, but yeah, you're right, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, the topics are there. Until we probably have the next work session with the town council, it may be worthwhile for us to not, I mean, we can talk about those six things, but until we know what they kind of want to talk about, it's kind of driving it, then we can pick a date and a time and a location for P I M number two, uh, a little bit more accurately.
Yeah, because, because we were looking for that, weren't we, in March?
We were gonna do it in March and if we're gonna push back, then it's gonna push that back to April. So, uh, you know, at the earliest, because we're gonna need about thirty days between the time we have the meeting and the time we have the meet, the, the public meeting, uh, to get everything set up and get everything ready, so.
And probably not gonna find a time that suits everybody.
No, uh, so what I was gonna do is try to get, uh, the majority of planning commission along with the majority of town council. And if we can, we, we follow the eight in several. If we can get eight percent of the people, uh, involved, we're doing real good.
Would the format kind of be the same as the last one or are you already set up to us?
The, the P I M?
Yeah.
It'll be up to you guys. I mean, we can do whatever you want to do. Uh, we don't have to use the same format for the public information meeting. We can use different ones, uh, you know, they used to have meetings where you guys set up here and all the people from the community set out there and one at a time, they would come to the podium and read you their thoughts or tell you their opinions. And then we would record all those right now.
Interesting.
We, we had not a lot of participation in that because a lot of people don't like getting up in front of a group at a podium and talking about what they want or don't want. So that's why we went to the more informal, like.
Well, I think that went, that went very well, in my opinion, the, what we did last at the Menzelman because, again, if you had somebody who's intimidated by talking in front of fifty people or twenty-five people, it was more one-on-one or one-on-two, you know, so think a lot. And writing down thoughts, I thought was a good idea as well.
Have we had more than one meeting for the other, the complaints?
We usually have two public meetings.
Did we do a survey at a meeting last time or it seems like a, maybe COVID thing?
We did a, um, a survey in addition to, the, the first meeting last time was more like the general topics meeting and it wasn't really well attended. But then the second meeting we had last time was pretty well attended.
I just don't remember at all.
And we did a online survey in between, but we really didn't get a lot of benefit from the online survey. We got a lot of the same stuff that we got from the meeting.
Cause I'm sitting here thinking, wouldn't it be this, probably gonna be the same people that come to the second one that came to the first one and they're gonna write down the same things that they were.
I was, I was wondering. I was, I was wondering too, what would, what would we do differently?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And would we do anything differently? And if, if you guys, you know, we don't, you tell us, we don't have to have meeting number two. Uh, we could have the first public meeting, and we could, you all, you all could have a joint, uh, work meeting with the council. And that, right there, may give us enough to clap for. And if you're happy with that, then we're happy with that. We, we'll do whatever you want us to do, so.
I mean, the more, more public input we have is the best, but I agree, if it's not gonna do much, it, you know, well, we can talk about it.
The format was good. I, I think the county, uh, planning commission is actually gonna use that format for their next, uh, for their complaint update.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought, I thought that meeting was a good meeting.
Like having two opportunities to people that didn't hear about the first one or couldn't make it.
I, I was just wondering, but do they, do they come?
Well, I don't know.
Or is it the same people?
Quite surprising the survey wouldn't do well, where you don't have to go anywhere and you can really say what you wanna say and...
Right. And we're gonna do a survey on the website anyway and try to refer people to that. But to give people an extra opportunity, one of the things I was gonna recommend is if we do have meeting number two, we consider a different location, we consider a different day of the week, we consider a different time of day. Uh, to give people that had a conflict with the first location, date or time, a different set of circumstances, and maybe they could attend that second meeting. You know, it's, uh, we only do this once every five years. So, uh, it is, uh, we'll do the best we can with the resources we have and what you guys think that you'd like to see. So, I would say, my recommendation would be, let's wait till we have the joint meeting with the town council and then decide on public meeting number two, if it's needed, or if we wanna just do the online survey. We've had something posted for a while, you know, if you have comments or anything about any of the comprehensive plan that's on the website right now, please email. I think they all go to Brooke, unfortunately, and bomb her email inbox, but, um, you know, we float that out there. And we may complete an actual electronic survey, uh, like through Survey Monkey or something like that, and push that out there too. That's fairly easy to do, doesn't cost a lot. And, uh, we might get some stuff back. A lot of the online stuff we get can be fairly negative, um, responses, uh, as you would imagine. Whereas if you take the time to engage in a public meeting and physically come there and engage with people, it's usually because you have something.
Instead of being a keyboard warrior.
Yeah, you, you have something.
It's all helpful, it's all help.
Yeah. So, that's, that's my recommendation, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we can do whatever you'd like.
Okay, so we'll kinda wait until we have the joint meeting with the council.
And I'm, I'm actually gonna maybe try to pull that back, since we're not gonna be able to do the Tuesday. I'm gonna see if they're willing to do, I'll survey them independently and just see if they're willing to do an earlier date, uh, rather than wait till the end of March. Uh, if they're able to do an earlier date, that would be more suitable. Are, uh, Wednesday evenings typically okay, or just depends on?
It just depends on...
On the week.
On the week.
Okay. Um, usually middle of the week, I usually try to hit middle of the week and middle of the evening, 'cause that's typically, the majority of people can target that, but... And that may be what we have to do, and just roll the dice with, with Bill and John, maybe, and
Sorry.
and see what they can do. But, like I said, if we can get seventy-five percent or eighty percent of the planning commissioner, I think that, that would be really good.
And, and you do have, you do have some time to work with, because today's just January fifteenth.
Correct.
So...
I'm looking pretty far out here, just because it does take a while to get all the pieces lined up, so apologize for that, but, um, I don't wanna miss the opportunity if we can make it work. So, I will pursue that. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion on the meeting for the comprehensive plan? Okay, and the last item there for discussion is the resolution from the council regarding important topics that they would like to ensure that are incorporated into the comprehensive plan for twenty twenty-five. Some may be needed to make amendments to the existing town ordinances. And, of course, some of these topics will be addressed during the comprehensive plan update. I think we mentioned in our last meeting that, in looking through this list, there are some that we can probably say right now, okay, we agree. Consideration of apartments by right in additional districts. Allowing apartment buildings as a by-right use in B one, M one. Okay? I'm not speaking for anybody else, but we, we probably all agree to that one.
That would should be a fairly easy one. And, um, you know, in relation to our lot sizes, which is number two, Mr. Chairman, and then also setbacks, which is number five. Our, our lot sizes and setbacks are fairly small, uh, for residential development. Now, if we decrease the house size, minimum house size to, from eight hundred square feet to six hundred square feet minimum, then it may be possible. The only way to get there would be to subdivide an existing lot to get to that smaller lot size. Unfortunately, many of our smallest lots are already at the minimum lot width.
Right.
Now. So, to be able to subdivide that thing would be really challenging. You know, one thing that we may wanna look at in, in, instead of smaller lots and smaller setbacks, would be how to get more housing into the existing lots we have, which is a two-family home. Make a duplex available to be there, uh, either side-by-side or one-over-one, uh, which they call like a resort-type, uh, one-over-one, you know, type of unit, uh, which is almost like a two-story apartment. There may be ways that we can change housing-type availability in those districts and keep the lot sizes we have, but put more housing in there. So, the side-by-sides and the one-over-ones are definitely a, a great option for that, especially the one-over-ones. 'Cause if you're on the moonfield, you got a fifty-foot wide, a hundred-and-forty-foot deep lot, which ninety-nine percent of those over there are that big, um, to put a one-over-one type, uh, two-family dwelling there on that existing lot doubles your housing capacity on every single one of those lots. So, uh, that may be an easier thing to accomplish than number two or, and number five.
And all these things we have been talking about in some way, shape or form.
Correct.
But, but how, how, how do you do, like, number seven and number eight? I mean, what, what's an affordability strategy and what's a anti-gentrification discrimination, I mean, I just displacement kinda? I don't under, I don't really can wrap my head around how we can, how we can affect that.
Seven, seven and eight are gonna be, uh, really, um, difficult to do. Uh, six, I, I don't know of any zoning barriers that are in there that block people from building traditional houses or even other types of housing, other than the fact that maybe we could reduce the minimum housing size, size. Number nine alludes to the thing I just talked to, but seven and eight, uh, bill specifically, um, that takes, um, the formation. Where you typically see those are cities that have, uh, housing authorities that are in charge of all housing types, uh, within, uh, common use areas that are not zoned, individual, single-family dwelling, residential. And so what that does is, it puts all of the housing underneath one authority, and then they establish these policies and strategies, um, to... And it's, it's essentially, the, the property owner has to work with it, because it's kind of a taking. Uh, it takes your zoning ordinance and magnifies it by like ten times, because now you're saying you, you can't get rid of somebody, you can't displace somebody based on their age or their income or whatever like that. You, you, the only time we ever see anything like seven and eight is federally subsidized housing, like, say, for example, Luray Meadows. When the Luray Meadows apartments were built, federal and state monies were used to build those. Part of the, um, clause that the property manager has to operate under for that housing type, because of the federal funds, are things that are like seven and eight.
Right, so that's already in there.
No, it makes sense.
So, so, so like seven and eight doesn't really apply, is, is what I'm hearing. So, what are we supposed to do with this?
Well, and maybe the thing is for seven and eight, we really don't have to do anything.
Well, not just seven and eight, but, I mean, what are we, this whole resolution, what are we supposed to, I mean, we're, we're, we're obviously working on some of these things already.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna recommend, is that we come up with a response to each one of these enumerated items, and then that's what I report back to council. This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna either embed it in our comprehensive plan, or we're gonna recommend a change to our existing, uh, zoning ordinance, or both. And for the things that are gonna require, um, overlays or the establishment of a housing authority of array that has omnipotent powers over people's real property, which I've not seen that happen.
Me neither, me either.
It's gonna be really difficult to do that. I mean, we can talk about it as a strategy, and we can talk about it as a, a good thing to do, but in terms of actually implementing that in Luray, though, that's, that's a decade worth of work right there to be able to even start on something like that. It's not say it's impossible, it's just that it's, it's difficult to do. One of the things that, uh, came up verbally, um, in relation to that was, um, the recommendation, and I was gonna recommend we include this in the comprehensive plan, and we do a recommendation, uh, as well to town council, is the formulation by town council of a housing commission, uh, that can do an in-depth evaluation of these specific housing items, housing types, housing stocks, number of houses, where they are, why they're not available, why are the issues what they are? Is the price too high? Is the condition of the home not good enough? Does it need more room? Does it need more parking? Let that housing commission focus on that specific tool, and then let them provide recommendations, not only to the town council, but to the planning commission. And put those folks out there that have experience with things like seven and eight and other housing-related issues, put them on this commission and let them, just let them go to town on it and see what they come back with. You know, some of the things that they're gonna come back with are, are not going to be easy for us to afford or to implement, but some of them may be. So, I, I think it's probably worth it for the council to consider that. But that came up at, at our last public meeting. I thought that was a fairly, fairly good idea. So, I would say, what I was gonna do with this is, I kinda know the answers to most of these already. So, if you want me to, what I'll do, and I, I encourage you guys to write down any answers you have for any of these or any, uh, objections or any suggestions you have, please, and email them to Brooke or I. I was gonna write down a proposed response for each of these eleven things and then bring that to you, and then let you guys look at that and say, yeah, we can agree to that, or no, I don't like that. I, I think we should say this other thing. But at least it would give you a starting point.
What would your suggestion be for number four with the P and D to, like, have a more affordable plan neighborhood or?
Okay, so, um, and we've talked about this before, mixed income, affordable and workforce housing. So, we're getting a workforce housing component right now. They're using Virginia housing grants and workforce grants, uh, at the, um, the former R Ware House Building. That's totally even workforce housing. What you have to have to be able to implement a lot of these ideas is, you have to have federal money on a job or state money on a job, on a housing job. Because any developer out of Northern Virginia or out of this county or any of the surrounding counties, they are not going to be looking at, um, um, income-based housing. They're not gonna be looking at limitations, they're not gonna be look, they're gonna look at, uh, affordability, but only in the index for them to be able to move the units. They're not so much worried about affordability for the individual workforce component or the individuals that may take that. How can we price these to where we can sell these things? That's what they're, that's the only third good number to have. So, until you get projects that have federal housing dollars on them or state-supported federal housing dollars, uh, that aren't concerned so much with the profit margin and are more concerned with solving an affordability issue or a housing, uh, number, you know, stock issue, when you get those type of projects, they can resolve some of these things, uh, like that. Most developers are not gonna focus in on these type of topics. Now, uh, Hub Group was an exception, but they are using federal and state housing grants to do that project over there. So, again, when you can offset a good bit of your investment capital with federal and state grant monies, then you can afford to let, look less at profitability and a little more toward workforce housing and some of these other concerns. So, that's what it takes, Bill.
Yeah, I got you, yeah.
If you don't have that, um, I, I don't, you know, unless we get somebody who's a, a how, a home builder who, you know, wins the lottery and decides to give their fortune away by building affordable houses and ready for all the people that want them, and, and, I, until we get somebody like that, uh, which happens pretty rarely.
I've never seen that happen.
Until you get somebody like that, who's just a really great Samaritan, who's trying to do wonderful things on earth, it gets really difficult. Habitat for Humanity is a great example of using federal and state dollars to do housing components that are more affordable.
Yeah, but that's like one-offs and stuff, and it's not a, it's not a like...
Yeah, exactly. So, the, the thing is, you know, for us, duplexes over on, uh, Hillside where the, um, our Hillside plane were probably the, the most housing that we saw, you know, out of them, building those units there, but it... Accomplish some of these goals without, I was just saying, three months. Uh, it's, it's tough to do it without three months.
Well, and that sort of applies well to seven and eight.
Yes.
I mean, it's the same situation there.
Really, really difficult to do those without getting a lot of money coming in from other sources that, A, doesn't have to be paid back
Yeah.
uh, to investors that are screening for...
You know, if you look into the future, do you see a lot of money coming down the pike, less money, what's your, what's your buy?
You know, we've been fortunate here, and we've seen a couple of projects, you know, we have a couple in town, you know, Rugby Square, Village Place, now Luray Meadows. For a town our size, we have a fair number of, of housing units that are here that are based on income. I think as a rural county with, and a township within a rural county, um, that has, you know, median income where we're at, um, we're more eligible for those funds, and we become more attractive to those type of projects, to builders, and people, uh, and things like People Incorporated, who can come in and say, hey, we've got a good opportunity here, let's try to make this happen in your locality. I think we're more staged for that than a lot of localities are. So, we have that advantage, um, but it, it's like everything else, you know, it has to be a project that falls perfectly into their design criteria, you know, the, the land has to be there, it has to be available at a decent price, it has to have, you know, utilities, it has to have all the seven, the magnificent seven things that have to be there for somebody to be able to develop that piece of land. It's magnified a hundred times when you're building, you know, like a Luray Meadows or a Village Place or something. So, it's, uh, I think I see more projects coming down the line, but they come very slowly. They just come really slow, slower than what we...
Slower, slower than the need.
Slower than the need, and that's sad. But, uh, I, I think, you know, maybe the establishment of the housing commission and looking at some of these grants, and maybe touching base with some of these agencies that make their living implementing state and federal housing dollars into projects, um, if we're able to do that and have a point, uh, commission, uh, that is able to go out and, and address those folks, uh, directly, I, I think maybe we'd see a few more, and that would be, that would be great. We'd love to see it.
One that we haven't mentioned too much about is number ten, allowing manufactured homes by right. Do we have a consensus of that's a good thing?
I think running those folks through the special use permit process, I can't think of one of these that has ever been denied in the time that I've worked for the town. So, it saves them months of time, seven hundred and fifty dollars roughly in application and advertising fees, uh, and if they're able to put that thing on there, as long as it's on a permanent masonry foundation and it meets, um, the housing requirements and the building officials' requirements, um, I'm saying that maybe a special use for those is no longer needed. I think the quality of those homes now is to the point, you know, the original concern was about impacting adjacent property values and home values, you know?
They look so good, they look pretty good, yeah.
And, and really, if you get a really nice, uh, manufactured or modular home, and you put it on a permanent foundation, and you put it between two speakable houses. And you ask somebody, rip the blindfold off them and say, tell me which one was brought in on the job and stuff.
Manufactured modular, two different things.
Two different things, yeah. Manufactured, what we're talking about. Yeah, we do have one builder in town who uses modular, uh, right now, um...
Yeah, you had just used the term modular and manufactured together
Yeah.
in your previous statement, so...
Can't be. Thank you for creating.
That's what I'm here for.
That needs your heat bars that I put in there, thanks for it.
Okay, other?
Back to the meeting.
Those are the money.
So, yes, I think that that was one that's kind of a slam dunk. I mean, we've talked about it for months, and I think that now, I was the right man that we consider that problem.
Right. Okay, so you can come back with this list as...
I'm going to come back with a, a list of responses.
See if we agree.
And additional heat bars, so that...
Keep, keep the ener, keep the energy up.
I don't understand, there aren't any in here. Don't check my pockets before I leave.
They're going to be gone. Because they're just the minis, you know. I will definitely do that for nine C. I will bring you back your app responses.
Great.
And then you guys should have all gotten an email from me about, did not check your emails, about a, a little survey, a performance survey for me. So February is my evaluation of town council meeting, so I'm trying to gather feedback.
So due by February or before?
If you can do it by the first of February or first week of February, that'd be awesome. Turn it back in to the mayor directly. Do not send them to me, please. If you want to email them, you can, or you can put them in an envelope, hand them to Stephanie in a time too. So the department heads get one, the administrators have to get one. Haven't done, been done before, but I wanted to, I want to include the planning commission.
Can I just email Stephanie with my thoughts and not have to do? Not developer, perfect.
Already turned by you.
It'll be like half sentence.
France cramp.
You know, that's one of my principal jobs is don't administrators work the planning commission. So I think, you know, I see you guys as an internal pipe, just like everybody else that works for the town. So I think it's important that you have said it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I've never had a say before, but I feel good.
Yeah.
So much power.
I know, raising.
And I hope you use it.
Only for good, right?
I prefer that you use it for good, and you use it for...
That was supposed to be honest.
Sometimes good, maybe.
On, on the comprehensive plan that we talked about a lot, just one thought that I had is that in talking about all of the, the new items that are going to be in the plan, and I, I know we'll do this, but we need to highlight the things that make Luray, Luray. I mean, I, I always think that we have things here that set us apart, and, and we obviously do with all the visitors that come and the people that visit here and then decide to, to retire or to, to move here. I mean, there, there are things that other small towns just do not have. And somehow through the plan, those need to be out there too. Building on the past or what we have, but honoring that, that we have that makes us special. I mean, we even got a movie theater, you know, what other town still has a movie theater? And I was struck too with the music last week from the Caroline for President Carter. What other town has that opportunity of, you know, five thousand people? We're unique, and, and some of our business properties and the Greenway, you know, the list goes on and on and on. We need to honor our, our town. Okay, any other action items that we need to bring up? I don't know of anything.
I had one, one was the creation of the housing commission, which we talked about. So the town council currently is working on reevaluating how they look at and consider special use permits for lodging houses, which are currently allowable in three zoning districts. They're by right in B1, they're by special use permit in R3 and M1 right now. So they are looking at creating a list of guiding principles. And by that, what they're looking at is what are the things that if you had the application in front of you and you were in a room with the door shut, what topics, what things would you think about? What elements would you consider to determine whether that application should get a yes vote from you or a no vote from you? So that's what they're looking for, is assembling a list of guiding principles. What are the things that are important for us when we evaluate these applications? You know, is it important where they're located? Is it important whether the owner is a resident of the town or are they an outside investor? Is it important to them, you know, where it is physically in relation to the other buildings around it? You know, and how close are they? Is it, is it conducive to a business-type atmosphere there? You know, people coming annoying versus a quieter residential-type neighborhood? What are the things that you would think about? Because that's what they're doing right now. They're figuring out what their driving factors are that they consider to be the yardstick that they measure applications by for those special use permits for lodging houses. So they're working on that now. I was hopeful that you guys would think about that too and email me whatever that you can come up with. If you were to look at some, when you look at an application that came in five months ago for a lodging house, what are the most important things in your mind when you look at that application?
Does it meet the code?
Yeah.
Basically. Write the code or are different and we'll be different, I mean, come on.
Yeah, now that, that one's going to be, that one's mine.
That's mine.
If it doesn't meet five nineteen, I'm supposed to tell you guys, hey, this thing doesn't...
Exactly, and if it meets the code, you have...
But isn't that what we do every single time that we get an application? So, I mean, we evaluate it.
I agree with Tracy, that's, it's, I...
What's the important thing that drives you on saying yes?
You can't slice it that fine.
Well, that's...
To me.
That's something that they're working on right now. And I think that when you, when you, you have to make subjective decisions based on the individual case. And that's what a special use permit process is. It evaluates every single case. So what you're supposed to do is when a special use application comes in and you guys recommend approval or disapproval to the council, I'm supposed to stand up, put my dark glasses on, use my Men in Black fleshy thing, and raise all your memories so that when the next application comes in, you're supposed to look at that thing on its own merits, by itself. Not what you did yesterday, not what you're thinking about doing tomorrow, but you're supposed to not think about, you're supposed to judge every single application on its own merits or its own problems and render a decision based on that. That's what's supposed to happen. Now, we're all human, and we don't do that. We think about the ones that...
Particularly when you have so many of them that are so similar to another. Then you get accused of disparate treatment. Well, why did you do it for this developer and not this person?
I agree with Tracy.
They're grappling with that issue too. So I wanted you guys to be thinking about that because that's something that they're dealing with right now. And it's going to last until right after their March regular meeting. And then I think we're going to be back into the processing applications for special use permits for lodging houses again.
In R3.
And M1.
And M1.
Yes.
Do you see a ton of those in the pipeline?
I think we've gotten enough calls to realize that people know that that more turns in place, and they're just kind of sitting on it and waiting until we get to March. And so that's why I wanted to let you guys know right now, that's what they're working on right now, is trying to figure out, it's, it's nearly impossible to create, like you're saying, a specific measuring tool that you're able to put up against that thing and say, yeah, you meet to here, or no, you only get to here. That's tough to do because every one of them, every situation's a little bit different. But then you get a five or 10 of them in a row that are all exactly the same. So, you know.
But it is a dilemma, you know, the whole situation. I mean, we can't remember that this is a tourism community.
Yeah.
We've restricted it down to R3 and M1. I mean, what else, what, how far else, do we just ban it all or not? I mean, that, that seems the way we should go.
There are very little lodging in this community. And tourism is a significant benefit to all the people that live here because of the revenue that it generates, so we have to keep that in mind.
Sure, absolutely.
And we, we eliminated the five that come in that are all alike.
Exactly, from the PNDs, yeah.
Playing neighborhood development.
We took that out of the, the playing neighborhood development, townhomes and apartment units. So, you know, one of the things, and I was talking to Brooke about this today, if you're keeping up with the news, Spain, the country of Spain, currently the prime minister is recommending a one-hundred percent tax on homes that are purchased by outside the UK or the European Union of property owners. Because what's happened there, especially in places like Barcelona and other, and Madrid, very popular tourist places, out-of-town investors are buying up all the houses and turning them into Airbnbs. And now they've driven the price of the very few units that are left for rentals or for purchases. The prices are so high that the locals and the, the native Spaniards can't afford to live there anymore.
That's already here.
Well, thank goodness we're not Spain.
That's already here. I mean, but that's already here. People can't afford to live in a rent that people are, can, can make here. And so what, what, what do you do about that? Do you make everyone have a minimum wage of like fifty dollars so people can afford it? I mean, that's not doable either. So where do, where do you, how do you thread that needle without like...
That's a good question. If you figure that out, I'm sure the rest of the world will.
The rest of the world will.
No, I'm going to work on it tonight, Brian.
Yeah, it's a tough one. I mean, you know, the thing is, and we've talked about in this room, affordability means something different to every single person.
Yeah, totally, it's so hard.
To try to put everybody in that same pigeonhole and say, well, this is an affordable house or this is an affordable apartment, that is nearly impossible to do. I think we're kind of lagging ourselves...
I, I feel for people, I mean, I, I do feel for people, but I don't know what, what, what the answer is.
Look how much, look what percentage of Page County travels outside of Page County to earn a wage that they can then live here.
That shouldn't be.
So, and, and the only way to do that is to make more money here and have more jobs and more higher-paying jobs here.
Yeah, okay, and that is done by...
Not the planning commission.
A number of cities in Northern Virginia are taking upon themselves to provide the funding for affordable housing, but a small community like Luray can't do that.
Yeah, we don't have the call for size to be able to do something like that.
And Richmond and Alexandria and places like that, the city is doing it.
Well, they have, all of them have housing authorities by which they utilize public funds to be able to provide those resources. And so having a commission probably is our first step to getting access to the people and the players that do these kind of projects elsewhere and find out, what would it take for us to get you to come here and do a job here? You know, because we'd really like for you to come and build, you know, X here or Y here. But yeah, it's, those issues are massive, international, things that are continually evolving. So even if you find a solution today, it's probably not going to be the answer tomorrow. It's going to be a different answer tomorrow. So it, that's a tough one, it's a moving target all the time. So I think all we can do is work with the tools that we have, try to provide what we can, remove any potential roadblocks or stoppages for people, and give them the best opportunities that we have available in our community. And that's about all that the planning commission and town council are really going to be able to do from an ordinance perspective, is to try to modify things. Now, we can try to be more attractive to developers who want to come in here and build, you know, impact or income moderated, going against it. We try to do that. Anytime somebody comes to the door, we reach out to even people incorporated, some of these other folks, hey, come take a look here, we've got a parcel here that's open, it's zone this, it's watered sewer here. Can you make this work with your current budget or your cap op? And we'll continue to do that. But we can't make them do it.
Right.
They have to want it.
But it is good to make it attractive and try to put it out there.
Okay, anything else to bring us up to date on? Anything else from the commission members? I'd just like to thank each of the commission members that were available to be reappointed and thank the council mem, council members who reappointed you all Monday evening. It's good, good that we can all still, you know, be here and work together. And I believe our next meeting is February the 12th. That sound right? Okay.
It was noted that the planning commission, fairly strong group, and so all of the members were gladly reappointed, keep, keep the dream team together.
A dream team.
That, that comment was made, you know, not during the meeting. I want to share that with you.
I want to see that in writing.
Proclamation would be nice for us.
Dream team was an ask or something.
Oh, don't we talk about Bill that way?
Okay, if we have nothing else, then we are adjourned. We've completed our agenda for January the 15th.